If possible, trustee Kennedy. Are you there? Trustee Kennedy?
Hello, Mr. Chair.
There, okay, thank you. Trustee Yeboha? Are you there? Trustee Yeboha? Okay, thank you, thank you. Call to order. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular board meeting with the Halton Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and is being livestreamed and will be posted on the Board's YouTube channel. Trustees, in order to be recognized, please use the hand up feature and teams to be automatically placed in queue. This is one meeting in the year which all trustees, myself, we look forward to. I want to extend a very warm welcome to all our students, staff, parents and guardians, and guests who are here in the boardroom and those watching online, too. Welcome. Item 1.1, Land Acknowledgement, Opening Prayer, The Our Father, National Anthem, and our staff, to please start us off with land acknowledgement.
Halton, as we know it today.
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawandaran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surround me greatly.
Are steeped in indigenous history.
As we gather today.
On these treaty lands.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
So honor and respect.
Four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
Animals.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
We acknowledge and thank.
The Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Thank you. Student trustee McGuire, could you please lead us with the opening prayer, The Our Father, National Anthem?
Yep, thank you through your chair. So today I've prepared an Advent prayer just because our Advent season started this Sunday, December 1st, and I think it also ties in really nicely to our presentation today with all you guys here to celebrate Keeping Christ in Christmas. So if you would join me in the sign of your faith. Lord Jesus, master of the light in the darkness, send your Holy Spirit upon our preparations for Christmas. We who have so much to do and seek quiet spaces to hear your voice each day. We who are anxious over many things, look forward to your coming among us. We who are blessed in so many ways long for the complete joy of your kingdom. We whose hearts are heavy see the joy of your presence. We who are your people walking in darkness yet seeking the light, hear we say, "Come, Lord Jesus." And if you would join me in the Our Father.
Our Father, who art in heaven, will be thy name.
Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil.
Thank you, trustee McGuire. Item 1.2, motion arising from in-camera. There was one motion arising from the in-camera session that will require a vote in this public session. I will read the motion. Can we have the motion now? I will now read the motion. Resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board ratified the attached memorandum of settlement within the Board and Oekta Secondary Unit effective September 1st, 2022, and to expire August 31st, 2026. May I ask for a move, please?
I'll move it.
Moved by trustee Ohan Chanada. Looking for a second, trustee Powell seconds it. I'll take this to a recorded vote. Trustee Ohan Chanada, what do you vote?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Vice Chair Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly? Trustee Sanders?
Favor.
Trustee Filbert?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Yeboha?
In favor.
Powell?
Favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Eight in favor, none opposed, no extension, motion carries. Shall now move on to our next order of business is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions, additions or corrections to the agenda? Do trustees want any item removed from the consent agenda? May I have the agenda? Thank you. Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the agenda? Looking for a mover, please. Trustee Carabala moves.
I'll second.
Vice Chair Murphy seconds it. Second. I'll call the vote on approval of the agenda. Vice Chair Murphy?
Favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Sanders?
In favor.
Trustee Filbert?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Yeboha?
In favor.
Powell?
Favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
In favor.
We have eight in favor, none opposed, no extension, motion carries, the agenda is approved. Business of declarations of conflict of interest, are there any conflicts of interest to be declared tonight? Seeing none, we shall move on to our next order of business, which is presentations. Item 4.1, Keeping Christ in Christmas. Director Klein, please introduce the presentation.
Thank you, Chair. Months from now, when we are in this room debating budgets and other things that are maybe less enjoyable, let us remember tonight, because this is truly one of the more enjoyable evenings that we spend, and has been historically, and will be moving forward, because it really reflects all the joy and the hope and the love that Catholic schools are here in Halton and have been throughout the province of Ontario for generations. So I will turn this over now to our communications officer, Amanda Bertucci, who will begin to give you a sense of why we're here and what we're about to witness. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Klein. Good evening, Mr. Chair, trustees, staff, students, parents and guests. For those of you who do not know me or didn't hear the introduction, my name is Amanda Bertucci, and joining me tonight are Juliana Glagoric and Rob DeFranco from our Strategic Communications Department. Also joining us tonight are our sponsorship partners, the Halton-Oekta Elementary and Secondary Associations, represented by Presidents Tara Hambley and Vanessa Sli. We are all excited to be here tonight to present this year's finalists for the 12th Annual Keeping Christ in Christmas Student Contest. As many of you already know, we began this contest in 2013. Over the years, the contest has evolved as we adjusted elements in response to feedback we received. We continue to be in awe by both the amount and quality of submissions we receive each year, and since 2013, we have received over 4,600 student entries and over 62,600 online votes have been placed. So all student finalists of the contest have joined us here tonight, along with their parents and families, all justifiably proud, as they should be. But before we get into the details of this year's contest, I will now ask Juliana to speak to our Christmas card fundraiser.
As many of you will remember, in 2018, we took the Keeping Christ in Christmas Initiative to the next level by using student artwork to create Christmas cards, which were offered up for a donation with proceeds supporting families in our community through the Society of St. Vincent de Paul. Our intent was to start small, and since then, we've expanded the sale of Christmas cards to all families and all staff in HCDSP. Happy to report that since 2018, we have sold over 2,800 card sets, raising more than $38,000 in funds to support families in need across Halton. This year's Christmas cards are still available until December 8th, and the link to purchase can be found on our HCDSP website. So if you haven't purchased your Christmas cards yet, please consider ordering a package or two to support this fundraiser. This year, the call for submissions went out on November 1st, and all entries were due by November 20th. We offered four submission categories: traditional artwork, original song, short video, and short stories or poems. We have received over 330 student submissions. On November 22nd, a judging panel met to review all of the submissions. The judging panel consisted of our Director of Education, John Klein, our Chair of the Board, Marvin Duarte, our Vice Chair of the Board, Emma Murphy, the President of the Halton-Oekta Elementary Teachers Association, Tara Hambley, the Vice President of the Halton-Oekta Elementary Teachers Association, Krista Hutchinson, the President of the Halton-Oekta Secondary Teachers Association, Vanessa Sli, Vice President of the Halton-Oekta Secondary Teachers Association, Michelle Texera, Superintendent of Education, Special Education Services, Cassandra Jack Caldera, our System Chaplain and Faith Formation Leader, Gillian Federico, and Senior Manager of Human Rights and Equity, Sita Jayaraman. I'll now ask Amanda to speak to the judging process.
So student submissions were reviewed separately, and the judging panel did not receive any personal information about students, so for example, name, age, homeschool, et cetera, or any additional information that would influence the selection process. The judges reviewed all of the entries and narrowed down the submissions to 12 entries, so three kindergarten to grade three submissions, three grades four to six submissions, three grades seven to eight submissions, and lastly, three secondary submissions in grades nine to 12. The judging panel narrowed down the finalists. The 12 finalist entries were showcased on our website, and the online voting process began, allowing students, parents, staff, and members of our community to make the final decision on the winners of the top prizes for our elementary and secondary divisions. The voting process took place between November 25th and December 1st. We received an outstanding turnout in the online voting process. Just this year alone, we received over 5,000 votes. So now it's time to meet the finalists. We'll now go through each of the final submissions and let you meet the students who created them. All students joining us this evening will have received a gift for their incredible accomplishments in making it to the finalist stage. Tonight, we will also announce the recipients of the four top prizes. Student finalists, once we have either showcased your submission or you've performed, please come up to the front to receive your certificate, and we're going to just pose for a quick photo with our Director of Education and Chair of our Board, just at the front over here. So first up, in our kindergarten to grade three group, we have a video submission created by Daniel Jacob, a kindergarten year-two student from St. Andrew Catholic Elementary School. We will play Daniel's video for you now. So congratulations, Daniel. Please come up to receive your certificate. Want to do it right over here?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a couple minutes, just for some technical difficulties, apologies. We're just checking for the audio. Okay, so we're going to be moving on. Yeah. Just going to be moving, yeah. We're good? Yep. Yep. Try again? We're good. All right. Thank you, Bill. Sorry about that. So we're going to be moving on to, in our elementary group, from kindergarten to grade three. So next, we have a nativity scene made with plasticine by Mary Gazul, a grade-two student from St. Gregory the Great Catholic Elementary School. Please join me in congratulating Mary. So also, in the kindergarten to grade three group, we have a song submission by Kenley Gunn, a grade-two student from St. John Burlington Catholic Elementary School. So we'll now play a video of Kenley's song now for you. Congratulations, Kenley.
Moving on to the grades. Sorry about that. Moving on to the grades four to six group, we have a video submission from Giselle Anne Juven, a grade-four student from Sacred Heart of Jesus Catholic Elementary School. We'll play her video for you now.
Congratulations, Giselle. Come up and get your certificate.
Next, we have a Jesus and Child clay figurine created by Anthony Hanna, a grade-six student from Holy Rosary Milton Catholic Elementary School. Congratulations, Anthony. Also in this group, we have a nativity scene 3D model created by Audrina Malik, a grade-five student from Sacred Heart of Jesus Catholic Elementary School. Congratulations, Audrina. Moving on to our grade seven to eight group, we have a story titled Amelia's Story by Adalina Markuzzi, a grade eight student from St. Nicholas Catholic Elementary School. We'd like to invite Adalina to share her story with us tonight.
Amelia's Christmas gift. Amelia loved Christmas, the lights, the presents, the smell of cookies baking, but this year felt different. It was the first Christmas without her nunna, who'd come to Canada from Italy many years ago. Nunna didn't speak much English, but she always said that Christmas wasn't just about the decorations or the gifts. It was about something deeper. One evening, Amelia found nunna's old prayer book, worn, filled with her scribbled notes in Italian. Inside, she had found a note nunna had written to her. "Ricordi di amore, il dono più grande è l'amore." Remember, my love, the greatest gift is love. Nunna had always shown love through the little things, welcoming new neighbors with food, comforting friends with her warm hugs, or making gifts by hand. Inspired, Amelia decided to follow her nunna's example. She baked bread for a neighbor who lost her job, wrote Christmas cards to friends who felt lonely, and volunteered at a local shelter. Each act reminded her of nunna's kindness. On Christmas Eve, rounded by her family, Amelia felt a warmth that went beyond the twinkling lights and presents. She could almost feel nunna's presence smiling, as if to say she had found the true meaning of Christmas. Amelia knew now that the season's deepest gift was the love they carried and shared, just as nunna always had. This story was inspired by the many stories my mom has told me about my great-grandmother, who'd recently turned 98 in November. Mm-hmm. Thank you. Merry Christmas. God bless.
Thank you, Adalina. Congratulations. Next, we have a song submission titled Carry Me Farther by Jessica Maedo, a grade eight student from St. Scholastica Catholic Elementary School. We'd like to invite Jessica to perform her song for us now.
When I'm searching for a place where I'm looking at all the wrong places at once, I'm looking at people that don't care that much. I'm doing enough, doing enough. Sometimes I feel like it's never enough. Carry me farther, carry me farther. Keep me in your heart, Lord. Carry me farther, carry me farther. Again and again and again, your love is everywhere. Sometimes I just feel like I'm not there. Lord, carry me farther, you carry me farther. I love you forever. So you can be going to church, doing good deeds, saying a prayer, even planting some trees, but what matters the most? To love God. Lord, carry me farther, carry me farther. Keep me in your heart, Lord. Carry me farther, carry me farther. Again and again and again, your love is everywhere. And I am sure that I am there. Lord, carry me farther, you carry me farther. Forever, Lord, I love you forever, I love you forever. I'll give you all my heart, Lord. I love you forever, I love you forever. She says, "All my credit, your love is everywhere." Lord, I am there. Lord, I love you forever, I love you forever. Keep me in your heart.
Congratulations, Jessica. And lastly, in this group, we have a painting of Mary, Joseph, and Jesus by Natalia Fuentes, a grade eight student from St. Andrew Catholic Elementary School. Congratulations, Natalia. So moving on to the grades nine to 12 group, we have a 3D model which was created by Julia Drera, a grade 10 student from St. Thomas Aquinas Catholic Secondary School. Congratulations, Julia. So next, we have a painting of Mary and baby Jesus by Mac Watson, a grade 11 student from St. Cetera Catholic Secondary School. Congratulations, Mac. And last of our finalist submissions, but certainly not least, we have an original song titled No Christmas Without You by Majoyan Solademi, a grade 10 student from Holy Trinity Catholic Secondary School. We'd like to invite Majoyan to perform her song for us now. Congratulations, Majoyan. So thank you to all of our talented student finalists. So before we announce the winners, I would like to invite the president of the Halton Oecta Elementary Teachers Association, Tara Hambley, and the president of the Halton Oecta Secondary Teachers Association, Vanessa Sli, to say a few words.
Thank you, everyone. My name is Tara Hambley. I'm the president of the Halton Elementary Catholic Teachers here on the board, and I can say that every year, it is such a great honor for us to sponsor this contest where we get to showcase all of the wonderful talents of all of our students. We are so proud of each and every one of you for all of the work that you've done. Be proud of yourselves. This was such an amazing contest. There were so many submissions, and to make it here tonight is really exceptional. So thank you so much for all the work you've done, and please continue to share your gifts with each and every one of us because you all are truly talented.
Thank you, Tara. Okay, everybody, raise your hand. Is this not? Raise your hand if you think this is the best board meeting of the entire year. Best board meeting. So honored to sponsor this contest. Am I the only one that had tears in their eyes tonight? Because I got a little teary-eyed as I was listening to the songs and seeing this beautiful artwork. And one of the themes of Advent that I always like to focus on is this theme of hope. And no matter what is going on in the world, the fact that God chose to become one of us means that there is hope, hope for all of us. And so thank you so much for sharing your gifts and talents with each and every one of us and inspiring that beautiful hope in all of us. Congratulations, everyone.
So now I believe we go on to the winners. Winner of K to three is Kinley Gunn. And the winner for grades four to six is Giselle Anne Jubin. Okay. And the winner for grades seven and eight is Adalina Markuzzi. Adalina Markuzzi. Congratulations. And our winner from grades nine to 12 is Mac Watson.
Thank you, Tara and Vanessa.
We would now like to take this opportunity to thank all the students who took part in our 12th Annual Keeping Christ in Christmas Contest. Since its inception, the Keeping Christ in Christmas Contest has continued to grow and flourish, but each year, we continue to be amazed by the enthusiasm and incredible talent we see in each of the submissions. We would also like to extend our appreciation to the judging panel for lending their time and expertise to determine the finalists who are here tonight. And special thanks to the Halton Oecta Elementary and Secondary Associations for sponsoring this contest through their generous donations towards the top prizes awarded to our student winners. Congratulations once again to all of our student finalists. Each of you should feel immensely proud of your achievements. Continue to use your unique skills and talents to accomplish great things, and thank you for helping us to keep Christ in Christmas. Could we now please get all of the student finalists together in the center of the boardroom? We would like to take some group photos and official photos with our Director of Education and Chair of the Board. Families are also welcome to take photos afterwards in the lobby. And before heading out, students can also pick up their submissions from the table in front of me. Thank you.
Before we go to the pictures, can we, can I hand the floor to trustees? Okay, so trustees, for a moment, I forgot where I was in the boardroom. So I'm handing it to trustees. If you'd like to say a few words to the students, please, please raise your hand and I'll hand you the floor. Just want to comment? Trustees want to comment? Kent? Trustee, trustee McGuire, to the floor.
Yeah, thank you through chair. I just wanted to thank all the students for their wonderful submissions. As a student trustee, it's really lovely to see all the talent and passion we have in our students here at HDSB. So yeah, thanks, guys. It was lovely to see all your talents.
Trustee Philbert?
Yeah, just, I had the same sentiment as Lauren. As a student trustee, it's really, really awesome to see all of the work you guys put in from elementary grades all the way to secondary. Like, I'm a student and I could never do anything that you guys just showcased to all of us. And I'm just so happy and grateful that we have so many students who are willing to use their talents to keep Christ in Christmas. Great job, guys.
Trustee, trustee Yebor.
Thank you through your chair. I just kind of want to echo what Sophia and Lauren said, but as a student trustee, you guys are just so impressive. And it was just so amazing to see you guys did. So I'm really happy to see you guys here and just congratulations, everyone.
Thank you. Trustee Saunders, I just want to say thank you. I'm very proud to be here and be in the same school board with you, you know, talented people. So thank you very much. Thank you, trustee Carabella.
Just briefly, thanks so much for helping us live Christmas better with your submissions. Thank you.
Thank you. And on behalf of the board of trustees, I want to thank all the students who have participated. Whether you won a prize or not, you're all winners. And, and you know, I just want to say thank you so much for participating. And I want to wish you all a blessed Advent season surrounded by the warmth of your family, joy of friendship, love of and love of Savior Jesus Christ. Thank you so much for coming to the board and presenting your pieces of art. Thank you.
Congratulations, Majoyan.
The following items have been agreed upon at the agenda approval to stay on the consent agenda. Item 6.1, action item 6.1.1, the minutes of the November 19th, 2024 regular board meeting. So there's only one action item here. The rest of the items are noted items. There will be a single motion to approve the action items. There will be no discussion on the noted items. I will now read the motion. Resolve that the Halton Catholic District School Board approve consent agenda item 6.1.1 as submitted at the December 3rd, 2024 regular board meeting. May I have a mover, please? Looking for a mover? Consent agenda. Trustee Carabella moves. Looking for a second, please? Vice Chair Murphy seconds it. There's no discussion. I shall now call the vote on this item. Trustee Kelly, how do you vote? Trustee Saunders?
Poshed.
Trustee Philbert?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Yebor?
In favor.
In favor.
Trustee Powell? Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanara?
In favor.
Vice Chair Murphy?
In favor.
With six in favor, one opposed, no abstention, motion carries, consent agenda is approved. Shall now move on to action items. Action items, item 9.1, 2023-24 Draft Audited Consolidated Financial Statement. Superintendent Loft, please speak to this item and then I will read the motion and place it on the table for trustees.
Thank you through your chair. I'd like to start off by acknowledging the hard work of the finance team. Adam Cross, Cheryl Dal Rompel, Dan Sullivan, Man Chi Chong, Andrew Kaplan, and a supervisor of accounting Rebecca Albers. Many late nights went into this, into preparing these financial statements. It was even more challenging this year with the Bill 124 retro payments. So thank you, everyone. Trustees, I present the 2324 Draft Audited Financial Statements for Review. These statements were presented last Thursday at the Audit Committee meeting and were unanimously approved. Tonight, I just want to remind trustees that back at the December 19th, 2023 board meeting, staff presented a balanced budget. To the significant worth of our entire system, we are pleased to present an operating surplus of 4.9 million and a one-time adjustment of 7.2 million due to historical accrual mistake. Mr. Chair Adam Cross, our senior manager of financial services, has a presentation that will walk us through tonight.
Go ahead, Mr. Cross.
Unfortunately, it won't be as exciting as what we just experienced, but nevertheless, I'll try my best. So just a reminder for everybody, our fiscal year follows our school year. So our fiscal year is September 1st to August 31st. The Education Act requires us to approve a preliminary budget at the end of June preceding the start of the fiscal year. And then, once we have actual student enrollment information, as of October 31st, we bring back revised budget in December. So the next meeting will be when we bring back revised for 2425. And then August 31st is the fiscal year end, and that's what we're talking about tonight, the results from that period. So as you will remember, that last December, the board approved our revised estimates. Now, when you look at the financial statements in the package today, you will notice that the budget that's in the financial statements is actually the original budget approved in June. That's the requirement of public sector accounting standards is to show the original budget not revised. So one little nuance to remember as we go through the presentation tonight. So there are seven key components to the financial statements. The two components that I want to draw the trustees' attention to this evening are the auditor's report, which is provided, the opinions provided by our external third-party auditors, Deloitte, and as well as the financial state, or financial statement notes. Those provide further detail onto, with respect to some of the financial components that make up the face of the financial statements. So when we're looking at the auditor's report, I believe there are opinions on page 26 of the package. And in the first sort of section of the auditor's report, it speaks to providing an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that our auditors can provide the board. So positive news from, from the audit. There were three new accounting standard changes for the current year. None of the changes had an impact on our financial statements. So there was really nothing for our school board to incorporate that's new from the prior year's financial statements to this year's with respect to no disclosure. So the statement of financial position. So this is a snapshot of the board's assets and liabilities at a point in time, which is August 31st, 2024, in the case of the 2324 financial statements. And I'll just go through some of the key components of the statement of financial position. So our cash balance this year is at 27.2 million. Of the cash balance, 23.6 represents our operating balance for the school board and 3.6 million represents school-generated funds. And that's accumulated a total of all our schools combined. So the SGF funds or school-generated funds increased 200,000 from, from last year. In terms of our accounts receivable, you'll notice a significant increase with respect to our accounts receivable in the current year. So the total, total value is 197.8 million, the largest portion of which comes from the government of Ontario. That's 176.7, and that's broken down into a few components. The largest portion is funding that we'll receive for capital, primarily debt that we, we issued for capital purchases that were acquired many years ago at this point. Then there's a significant component this year with respect to delay grant payment. So again, that's money that the ministry has held back based on our financial position and the strength of it. They do a calculation to determine how much they can hold back from, from actually providing to us in terms of cash and still have us operate effectively. And then the last two, two components are, are GSN funding. So there's a slight increase in GSN funding this year, and that's because of the late regulation changes. So once the, the union group started settling, the ministry went back and revised the rates in the technical paper. And as a result, they hadn't flowed that money to us throughout the year. So we have a larger receivable balance with respect to that in the current year. Uh, looking at our liabilities, so our temporary borrowing, uh, this is for land that we purchased through, uh, EDCs. Uh, so it's down, uh, from the prior year to fifty seven million. Uh, the decrease is largely made up of EDC collections in the year. So this was a, uh, really high year for educational development charges within the region. Uh, so we collected twenty six point eight million in EDCs this year and we had five point eight million in EDC eligible costs, which primarily relate to, uh, covering the debt, uh, and interest with, with respect to that debt that's shown in temporary borrowing. Our accounts payable and accrued liabilities is seventy one point six million, uh, this year, which is an increase of thirty three point six million from the prior year. Uh, the largest portion of this increase is driven off of a labor provision. So again, uh, because the ministry settled collective agreements late in the year, uh, we haven't paid. You, you would have, uh, seen, uh, tonight you voted on approving the electa secondary. So that's part of uh, the labor provision that we had included in our twenty three, twenty four financial statements because there's a retro component, uh, to those collective agreement, uh, settlements. Deferred revenue is at twenty seven point six million. Uh, the, there's a slight decrease in the use of proceeds of disposition. So this is, uh, money that we dedicated towards capital builds. Uh, so as part of our three schools that we were building in twenty three, twenty four that opened in, uh, twenty four, twenty five, we used one point five million of our proceeds of disposition. Our employee benefits, which are, uh, determined by our actuaries are at nine point six million for the current year. And our long term debt is at ninety three point five million. Uh, and this again relates to capital projects acquired in previous years. Deferred capital contributions. So, uh, this is where, uh, school board financial statements diverge from standard public sector accounting standards, uh, with respect to the recognition of revenue around, uh, contribution, contributions we receive from the province for tangible capital assets. Essentially, they want us to record the revenue, recognize the revenue, uh, as we amortize those assets. So we're recognizing, uh, costs and amortization every year, and then we're recognizing revenue, uh, that corresponds, uh, to that amortization every year. So the one thing just to remind, uh, trustees is that, uh, we also, uh, made decisions in the past to, uh, purchase or construct, uh, capital assets using our own funds, not the capital funds provided by the province. So there is a gap between, uh, our capital asset amortization and our revenue recognized from DCCs. And that gap is one point six billion for twenty three, twenty four. Uh, and then, uh, asset retirement obligations, just a minor change, um, with respect to asset retirement obligations. That was a new standard, if you recall, last year, uh, that we had to, uh, incorporate into our financial statements. And then again, looking at our tangible capital assets, uh, so note eleven of the financial statements provides greater detail in terms of, uh, the different, uh, categories of tangible capital assets. Our overall balance as of, uh, year end, August thirty first was eight hundred and thirty two million and the large driver of that were the three new school builds, uh, that we had in twenty three, twenty four. So statement of operations. So this shows our revenue and expenses for the board. So overall on our financial statements, you'll see that our revenues totaled five hundred and sixty six point one million, uh, compared to five hundred and thirty point eight million in expenses for an annual surplus of thirty five point three million. Uh, so we'll get into it a bit, bit later, but a large driver of that total surplus relates to those educational development charges funding. Uh, so when we talk about compliance, uh, in a bit and, and sort of the key metric that the ministry looks at in terms of the school board, they exclude that from those calculations. So just, uh, keep that in mind as we move through the presentation. So I'll just talk about, uh, revenue and expenses compared to prior year. Given that the budget that is in the financial statements isn't the final budget that we, uh, were working against or measuring ourselves to for the year because revised is not reflected in the financial statement. So I'll just speak to uh, the prior year changes, uh, tonight. So we had an increase of eighty five point eight million, uh, compare in, in, uh, in revenue compared to the prior year financial statements. So twenty eight point seven of that, uh, relates to grant revenue. So uh, this is our GSN revenue and, uh, as I previously mentioned, the large driver of that was the benchmark increases. Uh, we had we also had some increase in enrollment and, uh, increase in enrollment for summer school, but largely the driver of the twenty eight point seven million is the increase in benchmarks to accommodate, uh, the settlement of Bill one twenty four as well as the settlements of, uh, the other union agreements throughout twenty three, twenty four. Provincial grants, you'll notice that there's a significant increase in, uh, provincial grants compared to the prior year. So forty three point seven million, uh, specifically. A large portion of this is the, uh, Bill one twenty four retro funding that we received, uh, in the current year or twenty three, twenty four to, uh, pay back, uh, employees for the period of twenty nineteen, twenty through to twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. And then, uh, the current year in, uh, increases were incorporated in those benchmark, uh, changes. So our, uh, our other revenue increased eleven million dollars from the prior year, and this was largely due to, uh, that increase in education development charge, uh, revenue that we collected in twenty three, twenty four. And then we can see some, uh, smaller increases in school generated funds of one point five million and one point four million in interest income. And then we had a slight decrease in amortization of deferred capital contributions, and that's uh, due to certain assets, uh, coming to their end of life. So they did fully amortized in our records. Looking at our expenses, so we had a fifty nine point six million dollar increase in expenses over the prior year. Uh, instructional expenses increased thirty seven point nine million. And again, the largest area of impact was salaries and benefits, and this was triggered by the Bill one twenty four retro payments. Also, we saw a two million dollar increase in administration. Uh, this was again driven by primarily by the Bill one twenty four retro payments for administrative staff. Transportation increased by point five million, uh, due to fuel escalation and wage increases and funding for those and then our costs for it. And then pupil accommodation decreased two point two uh, million. So we saw some savings in supplies and services, a decrease in portable move and setup costs in twenty three, twenty four as well as, uh, decrease in debt servicing costs and interest charges. And then, uh, those, those decreases were partially offset by an increase in salaries and benefits due to Bill one twenty four retro payments. And other increased nineteen point nine million. Uh, so at the direction of the ministry, uh, they wanted us to separate the salary and benefit costs related to Bill one twenty four versus uh, the salary and benefit costs that we had to, uh, accrue for the labor provision. So that's for the, um, increases in, uh, labor rates that were collectively bargained. Um, so we reported those in, uh, in the other category for our, uh, teachers as well as non-union, um, based on the direction from the ministry. And then you'll, you'll see school generated fund expenses increased by one point five million as well. So when we look at our, uh, surplus for compliance purposes, uh, the total was twelve million, uh, of which, uh, four point nine million was our true operating surplus for twenty three, twenty four. And then we had a one time adjustment that CFO Lost, uh, mentioned, uh, in the introduction. So we'll just go through a quick summary of how, how did we end up with the four point nine million in operating surplus for twenty three, twenty four? So there were two components. Uh, the first, we had to look at our budget critically, uh, in twenty three, twenty four, and as we progress through the year, uh, think creatively on how to, uh, curb some of our costs. So we saw a decrease in energy and utility costs for facilities due to some strategic changes, including temperature adjustments throughout the year, as well as turning the AC off in the summer. Um, so all of those that were working at the board office appreciated that one, uh, immensely uh, in the summer, but, uh, we were all trying to kind of, uh, do our best to contribute to reduce costs in the current year. Uh, we also moved to virtual meetings whenever possible, and we saw, uh, a reduction in overlapping PD. So we were, uh, more concise with our PD and combined or piggybacked on PD to take advantage of, uh, of some synergies with respect to that. And we also re- reduced hospitality costs across the system, uh, for twenty three, twenty four. Some of the other changes or, or savings that we saw was we postponed hiring vacant positions if possible. So sometimes there the transition, uh, extended for, uh, longer than historically. Uh, we looked at our facility use, uh, from a rental perspective and the cost that we were charging, uh, with respect to facility usage. And, uh, a large driver was, uh, the cost of sick leave and WSIB, uh, was lower than budgeted. So uh, if you remember last year when we were, uh, presenting our financial results, we, uh, had higher costs with respect to sick, sick leave and WSIB than we had originally budgeted in twenty two, twenty three. Uh, after we presented our financial statements pa- last, this past December, we brought forward our revised budget and we, um, enhanced our contingency for sick leave in WSIB and happy to report that in twenty three, twenty four, we saw a downturn in some of our, uh, sick time and WSIB costs. So we, we had savings, uh, with respect to those areas. And then, uh, the impact of Bill one twenty four retro adjustments was better than anticipated. So we were thinking that we weren't going to, uh, we thought that there's going to be a larger gap, uh, when it came to the funding we received for Bill one twenty four versus the actual cost, but uh, happy to report that they came, they came in, uh, more aligned than anticipated. Uh, just speaking to kind of some of the enrollment changes that drove, uh, the revenue side. So uh, we saw an increase in elementary students of ninety five, a decrease of thirty one students in secondary for an overall increase of sixty four students. We also saw an increase in ESL students as well as summer school participation and enrollment, uh, um, all which increased our revenue based on the, the rates and the regs. Uh, we, again, we saw additional revenue from facility usage. So our rentals of our school facilities and TERFs. Uh, and then, uh, we had our Bill one twenty four revenue received in twenty three, twenty four. So the other portion of our surplus, uh, is respect to seven point two million, uh, and that just flows through to our reserves. So to give a bit of a background on this, uh, we identified an adjustment that was required, uh, with respect to accrued teacher salaries and benefits. Uh, this practice that we were following dated back to twenty sixteen, seventeen. Uh, so for those of you, um, who aren't familiar with accruals, uh, basically we're trying to match costs, uh, to the revenue, but record the costs actually incurred for the year, uh, in the year that it, uh, we had funding for it essentially. And, uh, so typically when we do accruals, there's really two major ones that we, we have to address at the school board. So the first one being is any invoices that come in, uh, subsequent to year end. So after August thirty first, but related to services or purchases that we had made prior to August thirty first. So we're required to accrue uh, those costs because they related to, uh, either work performed or transactions, uh, that transpired in the current year. Uh, and then the other component is our salary accruals. Uh, so typically, uh, based on the pay schedule, there's a component of, uh, salaries that, uh, when paid to employees in September related to hours worked, uh, back in August. But this isn't the case for teachers. So, uh, by the end of August thirty first, the teachers have received their full, uh, salary for the year. Uh, but what we were doing was we were following, uh, the other groups, uh, of employees and and accruing back a portion of that first pay in September to, uh, August time. But really, uh, when we looked at it, the teachers have received their full salary before August thirty first. So the payments that are made to the teachers at the beginning of September, uh, relate a hundred percent to the September year moving forward. So in adjusting for it, it created, uh, a seven point two million dollar surplus because essentially, uh, we reversed those, uh, accrued liabilities related to teacher salaries from twenty two, twenty three. And we didn't add, uh, an offsetting accrual for, uh, twenty three, twenty four. So, uh, just when it comes to the budget, we do want to, uh, let the trustees know that we've, we never budgeted for the accrual. So when we, when we look at our budget, we budget for the tru- the true full costs of the salary. So, uh, the additional costs that we're accumulating over those years, uh, were never at the expense of, uh, withholding funds for schools, uh, and frontline services. This was always kind of a cost we were adding to our financial reporting at the end of the year, uh, not something that we were factoring into our budget. Uh, so going forward, this will better align our budget, uh, our actual costs to how we budget, uh, for the year. So with respect to that surplus, we did, uh, allocate, uh, those funds across some key areas. Uh, so we replenished our operating reserve to make sure that we had the two percent of operating revenue, uh, in our, uh, operating reserve. Uh, so you recall the last few years, we were drawing down on that when we had deficits. So now, uh, we took this opportunity to replenish our operating reserve back to that two percent level. Uh, we increased our WSIB and employee future benefits to reflect the potential future costs that were determined by our actuaries. And then we also replenished our capital reserve for future projects. So this, uh, slide just outlines the total surplus for compliance purposes. Uh, so the twelve million that I was talking about. So you can see that we have three point nine million added to the unallocated. So uh, there aren't restrictions on these funds. We can choose to use them as necessary. Uh, later we increased our operating reserve by three point nine million, uh, and then we, uh, added, uh, primarily to our WSIB and employee future benefits there of four point two million. This is just a snapshot from the reporting that we filed with the ministry on November fifteenth. So you can see our in-year surplus of that twelve million dollars and, uh, the three compliance components that were factored in, uh, with respect to our compliance report. And, uh, I, I believe we presented this at the last, uh, financial, uh, presentation, but this is just a, a reminder for everybody on how the ministry looks at our, our revenue when they're, uh, looking at compliance. Uh, so basically they take our top line revenue and they reduce the components that aren't funded through the ministry. So uh, they pull out our school generated fund revenue, they pull out our EDC revenue, uh, and now since we adopted asset retirement obligations, they pull out the revenue that they're providing, uh, to cover those costs. And then for the expenses, they do a similar process where they pull out our school generated fund expenses. They, uh, pull out the expenses or the amortization related to capital projects that were committed to prior to twenty, uh, nineteen, September twenty nineteen. So they, they don't, uh, penalize boards for, uh, using their own money, uh, to purchase capital assets prior to twenty nineteen, but now it's included in our compliance. Uh, they adjust for some sinking fund interest and again, the asset retirement obligation expenses. And then they add two costs, uh, to it. So they add interest to be accrued and employee future benefit adjustments that they were uh, having boards budget for. And when you do, uh, those adjustments to revenue expenses, you get the twelve million dollar uh, compliance surplus for the year. And then just for comparative purposes, you can see our And then just for comparative purposes, you can see our deficit of four point nine million in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. And then our budget, where we had budgeted a compliance deficit of five hundred and ninety-four thousand. But again, when we brought the revised estimates back last December, we brought a balanced budget back for compliance purposes. So this column here is the original budget from June to match the financial statements. So next steps. So next board meeting, we'll be bringing the revised budget for twenty-four, twenty-five. Obviously, we'll be making some adjustments based on the results of the twenty-three, twenty-four budget and really looking again at our sick time and W S I B costs and other, other costs where we saw under spends in the current year, as well as adjustments for overspends that we saw in twenty-three and twenty-four in other areas. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Cross. I will now put the motion on the table. Get it moved in second, and then we'll take questions from trustees. This is an action item. May I ask for move for this item, please? Trustee Powell moves, looking for a second, please. Mr. Murphy seconds it. Thank you. I will now place this motion on the table. I'll read it. Sorry, I'm supposed to read the motion. Result that the Holden Catholicistic School Board approved twenty twenty-three, twenty-four draft audited financial statement is moved by trustee Powell, seconded by Mr. Murphy. Now open up question time. So we will work the same way as an action item, three minutes for question time. Trustees can ask questions continuously and then we'll take questions. We'll go to debate time, three minutes again there. So trustees, please ask your questions one after another, and I will keep the time. Trustee Saunders, you have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Cross, I'm just wondering, so the seven point two, so it sounds like starting in twenty sixteen, we started accruing this expense. And then this year, we, we, we clean out that expense. So, so we're understating our expenses this year and then hitting the, the reserves, the reserves would be.
Trustee Saunders, questions to the chair. Thank you.
Sorry, sorry.
Through you, Mr. Chair. That's correct. So back in twenty sixteen, we started this accrual process. It originally started at five days accrual, and it's grown every, every year since then by essentially one day to the point of last year being nine days. And then this year to correct it. So, so basically, what we're doing is we were bringing costs forward, so a year forward than when we were actually incurring the true cost to the board. So to fix it, you're, you're correct in that we artificially reported lower salary expenses for the current year. But at the end of the year, our accumulated surplus is correct to what it would have been had we not been making those accruals since twenty sixteen.
Thank you, trustee Saunders.
Yeah, a couple more questions?
Yeah, yeah, three minutes.
So each year, why were we not reversing the accruals each year? And why, why did it sort of carry forward?
Yep.
Mr. Cross?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We were reversing them, but so essentially, typically, as, as the pay calendars shift with every year, because we pay bi-weekly, it sort of shifts the total expense by one, one day a year up until nine days, and then it resets itself back down to five days as there becomes an extra kind of pay in the current year expenses. So we were reversing them in September every year, but then we were adding the next August, the accrual from the subsequent September. So let's say, for example, in twenty-one, twenty-two, we had an accrual of six million dollars. We reversed that in September, so our expenses would be lower in September. But by the time we got to August thirty-first of twenty twenty-three, we were accruing seven million in this case because we were adding one extra day of salary costs to, to that accrual, kind of shifting that calendar. And so we were, so the impact every year was not material for our auditing purposes. But it became, the number kept growing. And then, and then, you know, after further investigation and kind of talking with our, our auditors, we made the decision this year to do it correctly. In, in order to do that, we had to make the adjustment this year. So going forward, we won't be accruing for teacher salaries because they'll be fully paid as of August thirty-first. But we will continue to accrue for all our other groups that work throughout the summer.
Trustee Saunders?
Yeah, just a couple more questions. So we, there's a line item, other fees and revenues. So we had budgeted eighteen million. We actually ended up with thirty-six million. I'm just wondering, what would have been in, in that, that line item? And why, why is there such a great difference in, in what, what we budgeted to what we actually landed on? Mr. Cross?
Yep, through you, Mr. Chair. So the other revenue or other income, it is sort of a catch-all for the school board. So the largest portion of that balance relates to the education development charges that we collect. So we had budgeted ten million. We actually came in at twenty-six million dollars for education development charges in the current year. So a large portion of that increase is related to development charges. But we also had a few other items. We saw an increase in childcare before and after school rentals. So this is when our public partners that provide our before and after care, sometimes they might need additional rooms throughout the year to address the demand at different schools. So oftentimes, we'll find an adjustment between what we budgeted for before kind of the, the parties have decided how many rooms they actually need. So we saw an increase there, and we also saw an increase of community use rentals. Then we had some one-time funds that we received in the current year related to copyright settlement that had been ongoing for a number of years and in uniform agreement.
Trustee Saunders?
Yeah, just the other one I noted was the investment income. So we were pretty consistent, about nine hundred thousand for the last couple of years. And this year, we're at two point three million. So I'm just wondering, has there been a change in policy? Is the, is the province allowing us to keep this money or what would have driven that?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So good question. So there's two components that made up the increase in the current year. The one being because we had such large retro payments that we were paying out in the current year. And because depending on when union groups settled across the province, school boards had different dates in which they had to pay out the retro payments by. So the province gave a large portion to, of the funds to all school boards back in April and May. We didn't have to, based on when our unions came to their agreements, we didn't have to pay out until June and July. So we had a few months there where we had an increase in our cash balances, significant increases in our cash balances related to the Bill one twenty-four payments we received from the government in advance of when we actually had to pay them out. And then from a capital perspective, so because we were building the three schools in the current year, in previous years, we had sort of cash flowed those projects on our own. And then the province, so how the province funds us for capitals, they pay us two times a year. So they pay us based on our financial results in March. So information or costs that we've incurred essentially from March until the end of the year, they don't pay us until the next March. So when we're, when we're talking like date for date perspectives. So costs that we incurred for capital projects from April twenty twenty-four to August, the ministry doesn't pay us funds for those until March of twenty twenty-five. And then the second piece is we report, we do that stub reporting in March to be consolidated into the province's financial statements, and they pay us for those capital purchases in, in, in July. So that's costs that we incurred from September until March of the current year. But because our balances were so large, we couldn't cash flow the three schools with our own cash. Because if you recall last year at our financial statements, and you'll see in the financial statements, we only had eleven million in, in cash, and those schools cost significantly more than eleven million dollars. So we borrowed funds. And how the borrowing works is the province pays us back at a hundred percent of the costs, as long as we borrow within the parameters that they gave us. But then that allowed us to have cash on hand that we then earned interest on. Whereas before, we kind of spend that cash and not have it available to us. But because we borrowed, we had the cash.
Trustee Saunders, go ahead.
One last question, sorry.
Just add, excuse me, just add further to that. The previous year as well had lower interest rates. So interest rates were lower if you're comparing, I believe you're comparing it from twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four. So the previous year had significant lower interest rates. And I believe T D prime was around five and a quarter at the start, or five forty-five at the start of the year. And then it was up to seven twenty by majority of this year.
Thank you. Last question. So you, you'd mentioned there was a line item, expenses other, and it was distinct from the section, the one twenty-four. I think you said it was, was this increase in salaries sort of normal increase in salaries? Or, because it's, it's seven to twenty-four million, and so it's quite a big change.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so the province settled with some of the teachers' unions right in and around the year-end timeline. So the contracts for teachers ended as of twenty twenty-two. And then we started to, excuse me, see them settle at the end of twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. And in, in the case of Electa, we saw them actually settle after that period. But because we, there was costs associated with those settlements related to twenty-three, twenty-four, the province wanted us to recognize those expenses in the appropriate year. So they asked us to accrue for those projected retro payments as part of the new collective agreements. And so to separate it, they wanted to see it in a separate line, so they had us record it down in other expenses.
Thank you, trustee Saunders. You still have time? Okay, good. Up next is Mr. Murphy.
Mr. Chair, there was mention of postponement, postponement of hiring vacant positions. And I'd like to know what that means exactly and what that looks like.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I can, I can speak to how that impacted business services because we were one of the departments that chose to do that. So we had someone leave our accounting team. And for the past year, we had sort of divvied up those duties as best we could across other employees within the department and didn't fill the position. Essentially, for a full year, we went without the position, and then we, we finally filled it in the summertime. So similar departments were kind of seeing how long they could sort of stretch. Typically, try and recruit immediately, but we were, we were trying to kind of delay that and pick up savings along the way with respect to that.
Good question. Done? Okay, thank you. Trustee O'Han Chenara, you are up next. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Through you, Chair, to Mr. Cross. I just noticed in the strategy, I'm just looking for clarification. One of the notes was explaining to the system our budget issues. Could you just elaborate on that statement in the strategies?
Mr. Cross? Through you, Mr. Chair. So we did a bit of a roadshow. So senior team got in front of principals as well as staff, who then spoke to their staff as well and sort of explained the trajectory that we were on the last couple of years and the importance of trying to find savings in areas as best we could, kind of showing how we were funded and what elements of the funding. We haven't seen changes in the number of years, primarily when we look at like the materials and supplies costs that we get funded for. That rate hasn't changed in a number of years. So really, just trying to educate the full, full system in terms of where, where we're seeing pressures. And a lot of the pressures were coming from absenteeism and the cost to, to address that. But I think once people became more aware and really saw it, I think it changed sort of some attitudes and, and, and some under, gave, provided more context and understanding as to why they were seeing certain things in their school communities or departments. And I think it kind of galvanized people to, to really look at what, what can I do to contribute so that we can actually invest in the things that we want to invest in and are critical for the board?
Trustee O'Han Chenara?
I do have a follow-up. Thank you, Chair. So Mr. Cross or Superintendent Loft, do you feel that's a good strategy moving forward for surplus, deficit, compliant, non-compliant, regardless of the state of affairs? Do you feel that's a good strategy? You may continue on annually.
Thank you, trustee O'Han Chenara, Superintendent Loft.
I, I thought it was a good strategy. We also, as we mentioned before, we, at the budget time, we also talked to a lot of a subgroup for principals and vice principals with respect to even just budgeting in general. So I think it, it is important to kind of understand that the system understands. When I say the system, I mean the board, everyone in our board, we're all funded the same way. So make sure we all understand some of the gaps that we have. Adam mentioned, sorry, Mr. Cross mentioned even just something as simple as supplies and computers and things like that, we have the system, how that really, some of the pressures that we have from a budgetary standpoint.
You're good. Thank you. Up next is trustee Carabella. You have three minutes. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So through you, just in answering the question to trustee Murphy about the postponing filling jobs, does that ever pertain to teachers, teaching staff?
Mr. Cross?
Through you, Mr. Chair. No, we wouldn't leave classrooms sort of unsupervised. So it's more on the central office departments where we were looking there and in, in terms of what we could control kind of backend, not, not frontend services.
Thank you, trustee Carabella.
And another question, so some of the strategies that you used and, and are, are they going, they're a little bit the same as trustee O'Hern's or Nada asked you. But going now with the surplus going forward, do some of those cutbacks get taken away? So that, like paper, we've heard complaints about paper and things like that. So is that going to be reviewed?
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Mr. Cross?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So yeah, obviously, when you present a surplus, the next logical question from staff and departments is, so can I get more money? And obviously, we've encouraged staff to submit budget requests for revised estimates that will evaluate depending on the number of requests that we've received and the magnitude of the cost. We, we still want to be cautiously optimistic with, when it comes to sick time because, you know, we're not, we saw a one-year dip, but until it becomes like a trend, it's sort of hard to forecast. Will the costs continue to go down? Will they stabilize or will they kind of swoop, swoop back up? So yeah, we're, we're scaling back some of our contingencies. But I would say we're taking kind of baby steps. But obviously, as we start to gather more actual data, then we'll, we'll be better able to make more concrete decisions going forward for, for the full board. But yeah, so we, we will, when we're presenting the revised estimates at the next meeting, be bringing back like some additions to what you saw in June, but still with some, some caution in there. And we, we're trying not to have the big pendulum swing, one, one-year deficit, one-year surplus, one-year deficit. So we want to, you know, we're, we're obviously striving to get balanced. But so we're just kind of taking that approach.
Okay, I'm going to pass on to Superintendent Loft.
To you, Chair, through to trustee Carabella. One thing to remember too is last year, we had that big surprise. Must say surprise, but the W S I B came in from actuaries, and it was significant. It was over two million dollars was an impact. So that was the difference of being compliant and non-compliant. So those are always those, I'm gonna say surprise, because you get them in October, and it really can swing the needle one way or the other. So this year, we were, we had it planned, we had enough ready for it. So W S I B didn't have the same impact that it did as the primary year. So I think it's cautiously optimistic going forward might be the best way to, to, to address it.
Thank you, trustee Carabella.
One more question regarding the, the temperature fluctuations that were put in place. And so the air conditioning, when you say summer, does that include June or is that just July and August when the students are gone?
Yeah, through, through you, Mr. Chair. So it was primarily Yeah, through, through you, Mr. Chair, uh, so it was primarily July and August, um, not June.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella, you have another question, go ahead.
Okay, and then is also the heating is something that you play around with too, or, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Cross?
Yeah, uh, th- through you, Mr. Chair, uh, Superintendent Merrick may have more information in terms of, uh, the heating side, but I, I do believe we adjusted by a degree, uh, this past year to see, uh, how our community would respond to that and, uh, versus the savings that we were gathering from it, um, so I think it's something we're going to continue, I don't think we saw a significant point, uh, from the community versus the, the savings that we saw with the one-degree increase.
Uh, Superintendent Lofts?
Like, uh, to you, Chair, to Trustee Carabella, the other thing too is hydro was the big, the big savings, right, so, yeah, air conditioning, that's where you see the big ones, so in the summer, it was, yeah, based on what we had budgeted.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella, any further questions? No? Thank you, uh, with that, uh, next, up next is, uh, Trustee Kennedy, Trustee Kennedy, you have the floor, you have three minutes.
Thank, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, um, can you hear me okay?
Uh, yes, yes, we can.
I just had a question about, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, to, uh, Superintendent Cross, about, uh, summer school enrollment, I think you mentioned it was, um, higher, I thought the enrollment was down about four hundred, was it that we budgeted for hot, for more or less?
Mr. Cross? Uh, uh, yeah, so through, through you, Mr. Chair, um, we budgeted lower than what we actually had over the summer, and it's not, I should have clarified, it's not just specific summer school, it's also other programs that we offer during the summertime that we receive, uh, funding for.
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy.
Yeah, thank you, just wondering if you could, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, uh, the chart about like how we did it, um, reimagine how we budget, um, I think you mentioned something about, you kind of mentioned the energy costs, uh, more like the air conditioning in the summer, did that have any impact, like does, is that okay with our collective agreements, I assume it's, you know, with custodians and doing physical labor or like secretarial staff who are there during the summertime, like was it, was it the same as what the board temperature would have been, uh, at the schools, or were the schools, you know, zero air conditioning in the board, the board office was, like, did that have any impact on our custodial staff or secretarial staff absenteeism or, or our collective agreement?
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy, uh, Superintendent Merrick?
Can you, can you repeat the question again, sorry, just?
Trustee Kennedy, could you repeat a question, please?
Yeah, as long as it's not part of the time, but I'm just wondering how that impacted, uh, the removing of the air conditioning in the summer at schools, was it no air conditioning in schools but still air conditioning at the board office, and just how did that, did that affect our custodians anyway, maybe doing physical labor, and does it, how does it work with a collective agreement, do we have to have a certain temperature at our school during the summer for, say for secretarial staff, full-time, twelve months, and also custodians?
You, Mr. Chair, uh, so when we, uh, turned off the air conditioning in the summertime, uh, we turned it off, if there was a, a paying renter in the building, then we left the air a, a, a program in there running, uh, we have multiple municipal summer camps that run the summertime, they rent space, uh, we have our own schools that run summer camps, and they, they, you know, charge, uh, fees for the students to come there, uh, we kept air conditioning off for them as well, uh, if there was kind of just general work going on, uh, like our custodians in there cleaning the buildings, uh, we always have always in the past, as well as this summer as well, off the air conditioning, there's no air conditioning there when the custodians are in there, um, doing, doing our work, um, the board office also had the air conditioning off all summer, you know, that all C or, the, the vast majority of C E C staff, uh, are, are working twelve months of the year, so they're all working here throughout the summer as well, uh, with no air conditioning, as far as what the requirements are for providing air conditioning, there are no requirements, um, there, there is some provisions in the, uh, occupation, Occupation Health and Safety Act that if it is a, a certain temperature, you may have to provide more breaks to let people cool down, um, there are limits on how cold it can be, but not how hot it can be, having worked in, uh, manufacturing environments in the past, I know that it can get very hot in some of those environments, and that there is provision for, for how hot it can get other than providing extra breaks where, where necessary.
Through you, Mr. Chair, uh, one of the other, uh, sort of advantages of the, at the central office is we saw people using their vacation time, uh, more in the summer, which then reduces the accrual that we have to do at year-end, uh, for that, so there was that benefit too, which also from a mental health perspective was having people kind of rest and recharge going into the, the new school year, so we saw that benefit as well.
To, uh, Trustee Kennedy, and one thing also to remember is we're one of the few boards that has air conditioning in all our buildings, so that's a cost that most boards don't have, because the cost for hydro is, as we know, is, is, is pretty high relative to, to heat and gas, so the fact right from the get-go is we have higher costs than typical, than a typical board because we are air-conditioned, um, and we don't necessarily see a funding bump because we're air-conditioned, uh, some system, and I think it's to the betterment of our, uh, what we're able to offer, not just our employees but our students.
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy, you're up next.
Yeah, thank you, and through you, through you, uh, Mr. Chair, just wondering about, uh, student enrollment, you mentioned that increased revenue, um, we had a presentation a couple of weeks ago about international student increase, and sounded like that was a, quite a large number, was that a, was that a big component of, of the four-point-nine million dollar surplus, I didn't see it in the, uh, in the section there about, uh, how you reimagine the budget?
Mr. Cross? Through you, Mr. Chair, uh, no, we, we, we did, we did see, see increase enrollment for international students, and, uh, we obviously increase our, our, our income from that, uh, but as we increase our income, the province also increases their takeback, uh, from international students, so they do charge, uh, a, a portion, uh, we have to pay to the province to have international students, um, so the overall impact of, uh, international was not a significant, uh, increase to the bottom line.
Trustee Kennedy?
Yeah, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, um, regarding enrollment, I think you mentioned about actual enrollment was higher, sixty-four, I think, sixty-something students, um, you mentioned that that's a contributor to additional revenue, I mean, if, if enrollment is tied to the funding and the funding is tied to teaching staff, how would that like significantly increase the surplus if we, that money really is to go back into the classroom?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, so, uh, when we look at elementary class sizes, uh, at one, uh, point in time through the year, and then as, if stu- new students come, uh, after that, now date, they get, uh, absorbed into the classrooms that we currently have, open up new classrooms, uh, for, for those students, and this past year, we saw the increase on the elementary side as opposed to the secondary side, so, uh, without having to hire necessarily the corresponding teachers, uh, that go with that additional increase, uh, we, we see, we see that cost savings or pickup of revenue, uh, because the thing is to remember when we're, when we're looking at net changes of sixty-four, that could be like one or two students, it's not class per se over, for the, uh, with respect to that, so you won't necessarily need to hire a new teacher, but we also see it on the other end, because the ministry just looks at the board's enrollment as a whole, at school to school, certain schools we have more teaching costs than actually, uh, we get funding for, uh, just because that's what we need to make, that's, uh, appropriate.
Trustee?
That's, thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair, just wondering about, um, the, um, class sizes for, for ele- for secondary school, so we were, you know, over on the class sizes by point one-eight, and there's, you know, forty-four-hundred classes, how did that impact the budget, what, let me, so I, I assume we get that money from the ministry, if we have it over the class size, that we get to keep tho- that funds, those funds for other purposes, or in this case a surplus, how much did that impact the four-point-nine million, just the ele- the secondary?
Superintendent Lofts, would you like to speak to it, or Mr. Cross? Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Cross.
Uh, yeah, through, through you, Mr. Chair, uh, I guess.
Number two is we don't find out about numbers until the end of the year, are pretty finished for the semester, so the count dates are for secondary, secondary is very different, how they do it relative to, uh, elementary, uh, secondary, you have two periods a year that they look at, they look at March, October thirty-first, and then March thirty-first, by the time we get all our numbers all agreed to and, and all the checks and balances done, you're into, or where you're at officially for that year, so by that point, it's too late to make any adjustments anyways, um, usually there's a, sometimes a buffer for secondary isn't a buffer, this is something new as well, that really hasn't been, um, I guess, reported on prior to the last couple of years or so, if trustees remember the previous year, it was actually the other way, where we are at twenty-two, I mean, like, in cost there, result of having theoretically significantly more, uh, classrooms than we had students for on an average basis, so in a roundabout meetings, but really, um, it's not as significant as it's, it's, we have to be exact, and to be exact is a very difficult thing to do, information after the fact, so, uh...
We refer to them as sections, and so like one F T S section, so you have to kind of like factor that in when we're looking at the, the number of classes, it actually, you have to divide it by six to get the, for, for that point-one-e from last year, and I think it equated to roughly six, six teachers that we would have been under, so, uh, max savings, uh, if you want to, that would be the cost of six teachers.
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy, you have, uh, thirty seconds left, go ahead.
Just wondering about kindergarten enrollment, so we have a hundred and thirty-four classes and ten percent of them were over, so by that math, about thirteen classes were over, um, the, the twenty-nine threshold, um, thirteen kindergarten classes, thirteen teachers, I imagine thirteen EAs, um, we are allowed to be over in certain cases, there's specific two reasons, um, but we're not, you don't have to be over, how much do, do you find that that also added to the budget surplus by having those fourteen classes that were, that were over the ten percent, over the twenty-nine?
Uh, Superintendent Lofts, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, I'll just say, Trustee Kennedy, we were compliant for the last year at elementary panel, so, um, that's what we were focusing on.
Thank you.
So that wasn't my question, I just wondered how much that saved us on the surplus?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I, I don't have that calculation, uh, with us today, I knew, I know because we had presented the secondary at a previous board meeting, we, we made sure we had that information, but I don't have, I don't have that analysis, uh, with us today.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Trustee Kennedy, you have completed your three minutes, and with that, all trustees have completed question time, uh, I will now, time and Trustee O'Han Chenara, you have your hand up, uh, your three minutes, give me a second, give me a second, I just need to reset something.
Thank you, uh, through, to you, 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 to you,
Uh, the ministry standard, which it, which is great. So I'm really glad we were able to replenish those reserves and we got that one time adjustment. Um, really appreciate um your answers. Um, uh, Mr. Cross, very thorough, uh, you know, your numbers, um, great pres- great presentation. Um, I'm hoping I did, didn't, I ran out of question time, but I'm hoping maybe at another meeting, you can gi- give us an idea of what you think maybe the biggest challenges are going forward for budgeting. And um and some of the, some of the things we might be able to do, if there are any other efficiencies that you see going forward. It sounds like it's a challenging year every year with inflation. And um while it's dying down, it sounds like it's still, still a bit of, bit of an issue. Uh, my only concern, I'm glad we had the, the um, um, the surplus was, you know, some of the, the increase to the secondary enrollment, you know, there's. Uh, you know, four thousand forty four hundred classes and we had that, that overage, so that obviously helped, but we're not allowed to be that uh over this year. And also some of the kindergarten classes, I'm hoping that this year we're not gonna have, uh, you know, ten percent over, uh, maybe we have the more uh at the twenty nine and under level. But uh, thank you for your presentation.
Yeah, the trustees would like to use their three minutes for debate. Saying none. Uh, thank you, Superintendent Loft, and thank you, uh, Mr. Cross. And thank you for the team that you have behind the scenes for all the work that you do. It's not easy to crunch numbers and you, you guys are professionals and so I want to thank you for all the work that you have done presenting all these reports, different committees. So really appreciate it. And with that, I shall now call the vote on item nine point one, which was moved by trustee Powell, seconded by trustee. By Shea Murphy. Trustee Kelly, how do you vote? Trustee Sanders. Trustee uh Philbert. Oh, sorry.
In favor.
Trustee.
In favor.
Trustee Powell. Trustee Kennedy.
In favor.
Uh, Vice Mr. Murphy. And I will vote on this one. I'm in favor. You have seven in favor, one opposed, no abstention, motion carries. Uh, we now move on to our next order of business information items, uh eleven point one director's report. Director Klein, please present your report. Oh, by the way, we missed item number ten, staff reports. We do not have staff reports, so we are on item number eleven, information report, director's report.
Okay, thank you, Chair. So uh to continue, um, maybe some, some of the good news, I do want to mention as a. A bridge back to the previous uh report from a couple of weeks ago where we celebrated the uh. The ongoing victories of Corpus Christi's football team, Longhorns, that uh since that time, they went much further. And they won the Offsa Championship and that's the Golden Horseshoe Bowl. And we're very, very proud of uh the effort of the athletes, of the young men on that, and of course coaching staff and staff at the school. And obviously it takes a village and it takes a lot of parents to uh get them uh up to that level. And we're very, very grateful that uh there is a victory and that uh everybody was uh healthy and of course happy and proud. And did our, our board proud in terms of winning with humility and winning with uh joy too. So the report itself has a few elements to it, as you can see from the uh, the, the, the precis at the start. Obviously hitting every one of our priorities as a board and I'll go through them fairly quickly. The uh, we're at this time period now where it sounds crazy, but we're, we're, even though we just did, but revised budget of last year, ending this year. We're actually, we're facing another direction in terms of uh choices for parents and that is for next year. So to let people know, remind trustees and remind those of you out there uh who are watching this, that there's uh loads of opportunities to. Uh, register for Halton Catholic District School Board. And again, we just want to highlight the fact uh that we have in terms of our French programs, we have a variety of them. And the uh, the uh opportunities for people to register uh have begun and they go for about another week or so. And there's links in this report and links on our website for parents and families who are interested in those. And in terms of they have core French, we have French immersion, we have extended French, uh quite an array of options for our students. In elementary school, heading into high school, night school, secondary credit course registrations. Uh, we are a board that uh is more than, we say, we have three to ninety three really in terms of ages. And there are people who uh take night courses and take extended courses that are well into their adulthood and trying to. Um, avail themselves of the opportunities here at Halton Catholic District School Board to better their lives and to uh, and to uh refine their uh options in life. Registration is now open for semester two, uh night school and courses are offered through Thomas Merton. And uh they are offered uh remotely in a synchronous setting. And uh the uh avenues for those are pretty straightforward, either teams or Bright Space and D two L. And they take place on Monday and Wednesday evenings, starting on February nineteenth, which is when a little later than normal semester uh begins and goes to the end of uh June. And people have uh nearly two months to look at those courses and sign up. Uh, Rocket League playoffs, we noted those in the last uh uh report and I know people were probably losing sleep at night, wondering what happened, how did that turn out? And just to let you know that uh on that day, we had uh many, many students participate in esports Rocket League. Over a hundred and thirty five students participated, forty five teams represented. And it was uh uh hosted by Halton Catholic Athletic Association and the staff uh uh that make that up. And congratulations, of course, to our winners from our Lydia Fatima, Notre Dame and Saint Anne and Saint Nicholas. We are at the beginning of a new church year. So we've ended our church year, we're beginning uh with the season of Advent. Three days into it, two days into it, uh a new year, and uh that's exciting. And it's also exciting because we're aware that um Hebrew scripture and is a tradition in uh within Christian faiths uh or Christian for the traditions too for, for generations. And the bull that was uh 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 sent out uh not long ago, Spes non convutum, con- confundit. Means he, hope does not disappoint. And the theme for the uh, the Jubilee year is pilgrims of hope. The Jubilee begins on Christmas Eve and there is the tradition of a door being opened for that at Saint Peter's Basilica. And there's also another tradition that in each diocese around this world, uh in this universal church, that there are doors that are noted as being uh reflection of that or a facet of that. And in this uh uh neck of the woods, that is at Saint Andrews Parish in Oakville, we have a Jubilee committee. Uh, and that committee has a wide array of people within it, chaplains, teachers, administrators, representatives from parent community, parish priests and student trustee. And the committee has attended workshops hosted by the diocese uh for planning the Jubilee events. Part of that will be uh more fully, I guess, realized, visualize and explained the next time we meet. Uh, this month as a board of trustees, where we will have a presentation uh led by Superintendent Nar on that. And this will have as part of it a cross pilgrimage that's going to begin on December seventeenth. We're really hoping the weather is great that day. And uh the regular board meeting and Monsignor Conomahani will be there and bless the crosses. And uh trustees uh will be carrying crosses out of our boardroom where a cross will begin its journey and that will go over the year. The intent is to have the cross uh land within the, where Saint Andrew is, making sense of that church, that parish and that door. Uh, family of schools during the Catholic Education Week in May to coincide with our journeying with Jesus Initiative. So hopefully we'll have a nice alignment. And synergy of all those initiatives. Jubilee cards uh have been ordered for the distribution to all staff and all students. So families can again uh connect with the uh universal church in this Jubilee year. The Jubilee concludes January of next year. We know that January sixth is the feast of the epiphany. And with the closing of that holy door, and more information will be presented the next time we meet. Uh, the International Day of People with Disabilities, uh you'll know that December the third has for many years. Been a day when we mark that day and celebrate that day in honor. And throughout this week, uh, schools are invited to participate in a variety of learning activities. Uh, you're aware that in other initiatives that we have, we have virtual uh folders where schools can go in and get resources and get activities. Uh, that are differentiated depending on the, the grade level and the uh, and the uh context of the schools. This year's theme is amplifying the leadership persons with disabilities for an inclusive and sustainable future. And focus this year is to highlight the leadership and contributions of students with disabilities within our schools. Schools have been provided with a resource kit, as I said, that will allow them to uh more fully explore and more fully celebrate this. And there's a guide, of course, through our library services department. Uh, kindergarten uh registration is important to uh, to where we are and who we are. And throughout October, November, we held a series of kindergarten open houses across each of the municipalities. Uh, the open houses were designed to offer families an opportunity to learn about the program itself. It is very different from one and forward. It is rooted in uh play-based uh learning. A tour are some of our kindergarten classrooms and meet some of the staff and representatives of our before and after school programs as well. And that partnership that sustains this board and allow them also to connect with some of the fellow parents and community partners. Often, community partners are there and partners from uh our um special ed services and program services to come and also give a sense of. Uh, what lays in store, particularly for those parents where this is their first child, it's uh, it's very new and very different and maybe a little intimidating. And the registrations are now open. Please encourage others to explore that and make that uh choice. And to uh connect with uh their local school if they have any questions around that. They don't know what their local school is, they go on the website, they can uh put in their uh address and find out uh where that is. And then that adventure will begin. Um, the official blessing and dedication of Saint Veronica Catholic Elementary School uh coming up next week. Again, we hope the weather is good. Saint Veronica Catholic Elementary School will gather to celebrate the official blessing and dedication. Uh, auxiliary bishop, uh Wayne Lobzinger will be there and he'll preside over the celebration and we look forward to that. And the uh fun continues with our, our new schools. And as we head into the new year, in January and February respectively, we have. The official blessing and dedication of uh Saint Keteri Catholic Secondary School and Saint Josephine Bequita Catholic Elementary School in February. And uh again, we look forward to that. So lots of good things going on, lots to celebrate, uh lots to be jubilant about as we head into our Jubilee year and I'd invite any questions.
Thank you, Director Klein, for your uh presentation, your, your report. Uh, you have a speakers list, uh, trust, uh, Mr. Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, with the shortage of French teachers that we have, um, do we have a plan in place to ensure moving forward, we'll have the staff to cover this? You know, these programs with students.
Uh, right now, we want to take a look at what the, uh, we would want to with the uh enrollment and with our numbers looking into next year, which we'll be looking at. Certainly, as we head into the new year, we'll have a greater sense of how many classes we have in all our schools. And as we heard earlier, there's a variety of ways of uh ensuring that we have uh not only compliance with the regulations. Uh, that lay before us, but also to be as uh thoughtful and responsive as we can to the context of each school. Once we know that, we'll have a greater sense of the number of classrooms and therefore the number of uh uh of teachers that we'll need uh within those. We are, as we know through the uh, uh reports of uh Superintendent Oldman, uh keeping track of uh, of teachers as we uh ha- uh have them uh. Leave or or shift. And so with that, we can have a greater sense of uh, of what we're doing. We are uh through applied education, through other avenues, always open for uh teachers to apply to this uh school board. We are uh encouraging uh teachers uh to um again choose our board. And we are uh ensuring that the teachers who are here, who are those who teach uh F S L are are supported as uh fully as possible. Not sure if uh anybody in the uh. The team gallery over there has anything else to add, but doesn't look like it. Oh, Superintendent Oldman.
Yeah, I, I think our goal, and I think this has been re- and through you, Chair, um, I think this has been reiterated a few times, but it can't hurt to, to do it more, is that our goal is always to ensure that every classroom has a teacher. Um, and and the support staff required to ensure the best delivery of programming. So that includes F S L. Um, I think Director Klein's outlined, obviously, that that's a moving target in terms of, of uh supply and demand that, that's still yet to be seen. Um, but I also think we need to be a little bit more adaptive. Um, the market is, is, is not ours if we sit idle. Um, so I think we need to be responsive and and proactive and and competitive to ensure that we're, you know, not only providing the best programming through providing that with the best teachers possible. Um, in the area of F S L. So that's our commitment.
Follow up? No, thanks. Uh, up next is uh trustee Kennedy.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. So just wondering, so we, we still in December have a shortage of French teachers and who would be teaching French? Is it like an L T O or is there just no French being taught at all in the, in the, in the classrooms with no French teachers?
Superintendent Dolman.
Through you, Chair. Yeah, so this is again further information that we've shared um of our response. Uh, so we have a, a number of obviously uh mechanisms underway um to employ that, one of which is an investment we. Programming. Actively underway where the classes that are yet via F S L qualified teacher um are filled.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy.
I love you. Uh, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. When you mentioned being more adaptive to getting, getting teachers, when do we actually send out? You know, I guess notice, like notices that we're looking to hire teachers, like is it in June, is it in April, is it in March? Um, I just wondered if some teachers, if, you know, if, are we posting ours later than other schools and that other teachers have found other places to find employment? Like, when do we, when do we typically post those positions?
Trustee Kennedy, uh, we're getting into area now, we are focusing on Director Klein's report. Uh, so I'd like to come back and bring us all back to the report here, but uh Director Klein, would you like to?
The Chair, I'll certainly start uh by noting that, and I'll, I'll interpret it the way I'm interpreting it. Terms of the uh, when we're kind of open for business, we're always open for business for anybody to, to apply to this board. Uh, and the avenue for that, clearly like many uh other uh organizations, people go to our website and uh. The uh, the uh, they go through something called applied education and they can do that uh anytime, uh day or night, twenty four, seven, they can do that itself. The postings themselves are a little different. That comes uh later in the year when looking at the number of classes we have and the number of needs we have, then there are specific postings. There's postings within a transfer process and then there's postings within a uh, uh, the schools itself. So I'm not sure if trust, uh, if Superintendent Oldman has any more to add it. But it's a little, little different, but I uh, the same in many ways. It's getting uh teachers in front of students. Uh, but postings are a little different and then the actual job opportunities uh are um three hundred sixty five days a year.
Thank you, Director Klein. Thank you, trustee Kennedy. Uh, I see no other hands up. So Director Klein, thank you for presenting your. Thank you for presenting your report. Uh, we now move on to item eleven point two, twenty twenty three, twenty four Audit Committee Annual Report to the Ministry. Uh, Superintendent Loft, please present your report.
Uh, thank you through you, uh Chair. This report was presented at the November twenty first, twenty twenty four Audit Committee Meeting. As prescribed in Ontario Regulation three sixty one, ten, section fifteen, subsection one and two, and filed with the ministry. Uh, Mr. Chair, this report is submitted as information.
Thank you, Superintendent Loft. Trustees, any questions for Superintendent Loft on this report? Saying none. Thank you, Superintendent Loft, for presenting uh this item, uh information item. Uh, we now move on to item eleven point three, twenty twenty three, twenty four Treasurer's Annual Investment Report. Once again, Superintendent Loft, please present your report.
Thank you through you, Chair. Attached is a compliance, uh, excuse me, the attached is a compliance report prescribed Ontario Regulation forty one, ten, section fourteen, subsection one. Uh, the board did not have any prescribed investments maturing this year. Mr. Chair, this report is also submitted as information.
Thank you. Uh, trustees, any questions for Superintendent Loft on item eleven point three Treasurer's Annual Investment Report? Saying none. Once again, thank you, Superintendent Loft, for presenting uh this report. We now move on to our next order of businesses miscellaneous information, twelve point one O C S D A update. Trustee Ohan Chanata, would you like to present a verbal report?
Thank you through you, uh Chair. Uh, so just a couple items, very small tonight. So twenty twenty five Catholic trustees seminar, seminars coming up, January the seventeenth and eighteenth. So if you have it registered, please do so. I know that some of the spots are limited availability. I do have a meeting with the Board of Directors from Oxta this Friday, December the sixth at two P M. So at the next board meeting, I'll have a more fulsome report of, of how that meeting went and any information that uh I feel like I need to share with the rest of my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanara. Trustees, any questions, comments for trustee Ohan Chanara? Saying none. Thank you, trustee Ohan, Ohan Chanara, for presenting uh your update. Uh, we move on to correspondences, number thirteen, we do not have correspondence, we do not have, uh, any questions uh submitted, Director Klein? No, no questions. So we skip and we move on to in camera. We do not have to go in camera. Resolution regarding absentees, we have one trustee uh Agnew. Has uh sent in a note. Uh, any other trustee, uh, I think everybody else is present here. May I have a motion to excuse trustee Ohan, uh, sorry, trustee Agnew?
Amen.
Moved by trustee Ohan Chanara. Seconded by trustee Kelly, all in favor? Anybody opposed? Saying none. Motion carries. Trustee Agnew is excused. Now move on to adjournment and closing prayer. May I please have a motion to adjourn, looking for removal. Trustee Sanders knows, trustee Carabella seconds, all in favor? Anybody opposed? Saying none. Motion carries. We are adjourned. I will, I will now lead us in the closing prayer. Please join me in the sign of our faith in the name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Loving God, as we conclude this meeting, we pause to offer you our gratitude for the gift of our work together. We thank you for the wisdom you have granted us as we serve the children, families and staff in our H C D S B school community. This Advent season, we ask that you fill our hearts with hope, joy and peace as we prepare for the coming of your son, Jesus. If we, may we reflect his love and light in all that we do, especially in the decisions we make for the benefit of all our students. Pray for our families, our teachers, educators and staff that they may experience the blessing of this season. Love, unity and grace. Guide our actions and our words that we may continue to build an environment where faith, kindness and learning flourish. We ask for your continued blessing as we move forward in our H C D S B mission to serve our school communities. May the joy of Christ's birth inspire us to serve with renewed passion and commitment. We offer this prayer through Christ our Savior. Amen. In the name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Thank you for a great meeting, everyone. Good night.